... Evergreen Senior Homes item. That passes unanimously. So, do we have a staff presentation on item 4.1? Nope, okay. We will be, we will be coming back. We're taking a recess on item 3.5, I'm sorry, 3.6, and we'll be resuming that item as soon as the votes are back. Okay, great. Welcome, Kim. We're now on 4.1, which is the Evergreen Senior Homes.
Yeah, I just wanted to say a few words to open your discussion of this because I realize we have some new council members for whom this 9212 report is, is new, right? So, this is a California Elections Code requirement that when a ballot initiative has been, collected the signatures that they need and certified by the election official, then the city council can direct within 30 days that staff bring back the Section 9212 report to council. So, what's the purpose of the report? Why do we do this? The purpose is so that you have the information at hand in case you would decide to adopt the initiative as city policy rather than letting it go to the voters for a vote at the next election. So, that's, that's the purpose of compiling this information. So, we collected all of the staff that would be involved with this, representing five departments, probably 15 people this morning, and just wanted to convey the required sections in the memo, in Tony's memo, A through I. This alone is a, is a very heavy lift. So, we would be starting this work now to get it in place so that once we get the 30-day notice, we basically have 20 days to finish it up because with the 10-day sunshine. We will not be able to complete this work in-house. So, some of the elements, including the fiscal impact analysis and the transportation analysis, we will need some specialized consulting assistance. So, we will need to take a look at what will the budget be to do this required work and come back to you. So, we, we respect and understand the, some of the suggestions that Councilmember Rocha has made in his memo, but just wanted to maybe be cautious about adding additional must-do requirements at this time because it's already a big staff effort and consultant effort. I also want to point out that I think some of the information that is being requested, we'd be happy to point to, there's information and analysis that are already documented over sort of the decades of work on Evergreen-related policies and plans and the General Plan 2020 and the General Plan 2040. So, we'd be happy to make reference to where this information from prior analyses is. So, just wanted to say that upfront. We did one of these 9212 reports when we had the minimum wage initiative and we had the opportunity to work initiative, but especially for the benefit of the new council members, that's what this is.
Thank you. I appreciate that Councilmember Rocha's filed a memorandum. And I just want to clarify, what has been submitted to the Rules Committee and for us for consideration is verbatim from the Elections Code. As Councilmember Rocha suggests, we can certainly expand the analysis, but that analysis has, for the most part, much of that has been done through the 2011 General Plan EIR accompanying the General Plan as well as through the Evergreen specific plan and the EIR accompanying that plan. And so, to study sort of the current state of the General Plan, it seems to me, will be money and time that will be somewhat redundant, I think. And I'm not sure we have the luxury of spending a lot of money and time doing things that we did five years ago. And certainly, we, there's no reason why staff could not provide links to all the council members and the public, to all those documents and the relevant portions, but to go hire consultants to do that analysis, again, I believe would not be productive. Councilmember Rocha?
Thank you, Mayor. Appreciate the feedback on that. But I guess I'm a bit confused as to the level, or maybe I'm just not clear on this, the level of work that I would have been expecting. So, if the, if the work already exists out there, then what is the workload or cost of putting that on a piece of paper and providing it in a table next to the potential build-out of the senior housing project?
So, our initial assessment is that some of what you're asking for exists elsewhere, and I'm saying we will just do that. We will just point to where the work exists. There are some items on here that we'll need to take a look at that is new. For example, looking at the induced demand for housing by commercial development versus housing development. You know, that would require going back to a model that was developed several years ago for the housing impact fee analysis that, you know, we don't have own control. It's not updated. So, we would need to, you know, if, if that really needs to be done, and it's outside of the scope of what the state requires, we would just need to, to figure out what that costs and who does this to make sure we're providing reliable, accurate information if it's really important for the council to have that.
Thank you. And when you say "point to," I guess this isn't something that's happened too often, is we'll tell you where to go get it, but we're not going to put it together and we're not going to ask a consultant to go get it, even if it's easily accessible and already done. That's the word that you've used twice, too, is we'll point to it, but we're not going to go get it for you. It's not something I often hear from when we're trying to make a decision of this importance. I guess for me, I'm a bit confused. Why would be, why would we not want to put that information or assemble that information? Or even ask a consultant? If it's that readily accessible, there can't be a significant cost associated with it if it's already done.
Yeah, I'm sorry. I might not be, be clear. If the information is already available, then we will just either include that information. If it's something that would require a different kind of analysis, that would be my concern.
Got it. Thank you. That's much more clear. So, let me ask, in terms of the cost and scope of the consultant work that we're going to be asking, are we going to do an RFQ, RFI? We already have one on contract that we're going to use. What's the plan here?
You know, honestly, this has, this has come up pretty suddenly. So, given all the other work to prepare for this session, we just met on this this morning. So, we have a team that's taking a look at it. Quite frankly, we don't have time to go through our normal RFQ, RFP processes. So, we would most likely try to look at fiscal analyses consultants that we've used in the past and our transportation planning consultants that I believe we have agreements with. So, but we're just doing that work now to scope out what we think really needs to be done to complete this report.
Thank you. So, when you say "just met on it just today," are you talking about the memorandum that I submitted or the whole effort in terms of the one that was submitted to the Rules Committee?
Yeah, yeah. Taking a look at what would it really take to complete the effort at the Rules Committee, you know, and with your memo. We looked at both this morning, really for the first time. Preparing for this and sorting through, you know, all, getting all the information together for this, quite frankly, has been our priority for the last two weeks. So, we're just now turning to how would we manage this to get this 9212 done? That's our next.
Thank you. That, that makes a lot of sense. So, I think, I guess from my vantage point is if that is the case, and again, I, I see this as a pretty significant issue, that staff might have suggested maybe a deferral if you never met on this until this morning so you can really get a better sense of the scope and the work that you would be doing on this. You know, folks have talked about how important this is or how detrimental this is or however, whatever the case may be, regardless of your vantage point. And to have a council meeting, we don't even know what the scope of this is, how we're going to go about getting this done. I'm, I'm surprised, I guess, maybe.
I don't believe the timeline is our making, Rick. I don't know. Can you clarify what our requirements are under the law?
No, the, the timeline, I think, as Kim indicated, is, as she said, it was 30 days after the measure is certified by the city clerk as qualifying. The difficulty is this is a fairly significant undertaking, and to do it in 20 days or 30 days is virtually impossible. So, the, the idea was to get as much leave time, get the council to buy in and say, "Yeah, go do it per the Elections Code," and then give staff then the time, whether they're doing, what they're doing internally, what they're doing with outside resources, to, to bring something forward. So, the time, we're constrained by what the requirements are. I have no idea, I don't think any of us have any idea what the level of, where they are on the signature gathering process, if it is even going to qualify for the ballot. But I think the idea is that with the assumption that it is, we want to be prepared to give the, the full report to the council.
Thank you. And then to clarify, so it's 30 days after they are, the signatures are submitted?
After they're certified by the city clerk. So, they, it's after it's, they're, the, after it qualifies for the ballot.
And then how long is that window for them to gather the signatures once they submitted that initial petition?
You mean, how, how long is their signature process? I think it goes, is it, is it 90 days or 120 days?
I think it's 180 days to gather signatures.
Six months.
Yeah, it's about six months.
So, we have potentially six months and then 30 days after. So, we have potentially seven, potentially seven months.
Potentially.
But, you know, the point that I was just making is for us to not defer this when we're more prepared to talk about what kind of scope of work we want to do on an issue that's important, and you're telling me it's a time issue, but yet we have potentially seven months.
Well, the way, I think the concern is, is that if they bring something in before, by Thanksgiving or the end of the year, that starts the time period. The County Register of Voters has 30 days to count the signatures, then that's submitted to the city clerk and who has then 30 days to, has to certify it. And then that's when the 30-day window for this report kicks in. So, theoretically, it could be January by the time this thing has to be, this report has to be delivered. And I think staff is saying, "We need that sufficient leave time to get a report out." Again, we don't control how fast they're getting signatures. It's well-funded. It's, and they're sophisticated in getting things on the ballot. And I think we anticipate it's likely to be on the ballot.
Thank you. So, theoretically, it could be January, but theoretically, it could be seven months. Just in this theoretical world that exists, it could be either or.
It could be. So, we're preparing for, we're preparing for either.
I under, I'm well aware of that. So, I just was posing that we're, we're talking about a time constraint here, but yet we're not certain of that. And operating under that worst-case or best-case scenario, dependent upon your point of view, I was trying to get my head around is why we're just assuming that it's going to be that quick.
Yeah, and I, the only thing I'd add is if it gets on the June ballot, it, it needs to be, I mean, everything, March is ready to deadline.
Yeah, thank you very much. Then, given, and forgive me if you haven't had a lot of time to do some work on this. I appreciate that. But when you went through the ones, as the mayor pointed out, which are required by state law, but then the ones that I had submitted for additional information, were there particular numbers in here? I know you talked about the one, you used the term "induced." But are there any one of these, looking at the four, I think it's four I have or five, that you think you can do, included in the scope of work and consultant that we're going to hire, that we don't know who or what? One, two, three, four? Is there any particular one that you think we can do, can't do within the scope of this? And again, if you haven't had time to really sit down.
Yeah, I don't, I'm just, I'm hesitant to just off the seat of my pants do that work. But we can do it shortly.
Thank you. I'm sorry to interrupt. Which again, just leads me to question why we're, you know, if we're not in a position to even talk about this. You know, for me, not knowing what the alternative is, if we're already going to take an initial position that we oppose this without even knowing what the potential impacts are of the current build-out, you know, knowing what kind of position I'm going to take, knowing what kind of position the city's going to be in, knowing what kind of information I'd be interested in knowing when I, if that decision ever comes before me, whether or not I want to adopt this outright or not, assuming that the signatures are collected, to not even know what a build-out would look like with the current designation versus the potential new designation. You know, the whole thing, for me, is not in a position one where I'm comfortable going forward as it stands. Thank you.
Quick question. Tony, do, do we know if it's a January, or a June or November ballot from the?
I don't know what they're aiming for. They haven't indicated if they're looking for June or November. Typically, November has a higher turnout. So, if they think that's to their benefit. But I don't know what they're shooting at, they didn't say.
Yeah, I know they've got Campaign Lurcher out already, so I don't know if there's, okay. Councilmember Jimenez?
I just wanted to mention that this analysis is not to oppose the initiative. It's just to acquire a clear analysis of the impact it has on our city and our community. And because it's primarily in District Eight, beginning in District Eight, I'm very, very invested in seeing what the, what the impact is, is there first and foremost. But it has a greater impact. It's, it's not just exclusive to District Eight.
All right. We have three members of the public who like to, oh, Councilmember Jimenez?
I just want to say, certainly, I appreciate you mentioning about the 92, 9212, you know, report, learning about this as we go. For me, I think in, in any decision that we make, I want as much information as possible. Certainly, I can tell you, and I've shared this with some of the residents that I represent, is I'm not necessarily supportive of the way folks are going about this, the folks, you know, that are interested in building this out in Evergreen. But I think it's important to get as much information as possible. And if it's Councilmember Rocha's memo that does that, I'm all in support of it. So, I'll move his memo and move it for approval.
Three members of the committee would like to speak. Jeff Schroeder, followed by Sean Welch and Gail Osmer.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, San Jose council members. My name is Jeff Schroeder. With San Jose residents for Evergreen Senior Homes, the initiative proponent, my company, Ponderosa Homes, is a major sponsor. On behalf of the committee, I'm pleased to report that in a few short weeks, many thousands of voters have already signed the initiative to qualify for the ballot. The mayor recently said, "We must think big and act boldly to address the housing crisis." We completely agree. Unfortunately, in his 15-point plan, there is not a single mention about housing for seniors and veterans. The frustration around the lack of housing for these vulnerable communities is what the Evergreen Senior Homes community seeks to address, much-needed senior and affordable housing on long-bacon industrial land. Recent polling shows two out of three San Jose residents agree this land would be better used towards solving the city's housing crisis. Our proposal is simple, 910 new units of housing with 20% legally required at below-market rate pricing for seniors and veterans. There have already been some official city communications campaigning against this ballot initiative. In addition to being illegal, they are also misleading and false. I would like to clarify a couple of important points. The increased 20% affordable housing requirement, the senior-only, 55-plus-no-children requirement, veterans' preference commitment, along with traffic improvements and fair-share cost obligations. These are all express mandates of the initiative and existing city rules, all legally enforceable by the city council. Suggesting otherwise is disingenuous and misleading to the voters. It is nothing more than scare tactics for seniors, veterans, and neighbors, and we hope it will stop. Evergreen Senior Homes initiative supporters are committed to a transparent, truthful discussion about the initiative. All we ask for is a fair and unbiased process from the city so that voters can reasonably make up their own minds. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Sean Welch?
Followed by Gail Osmer. Good evening, Mayor, Vice Mayor, council members. My name is Sean Welch. I'm an election law attorney with the Nielsen Merximer Law Firm. We're legal counsel to the Evergreen Senior Homes Initiative campaign. First, we'd like to thank you for your attention to the 9212 report as we look forward to a fair and impartial analysis of the measure. We constantly hear from voters that they desperately want to weigh in directly on these important issues like housing. Unfortunately, we also often hear from certain elected officials that voters aren't up to the task or that direct democracy doesn't work. That is, in fact, expressly why the right of initiative was reserved for the people in the California Constitution and why it is safeguarded in the San Jose City Charter. Second, and this point relates to the first, we remain deeply concerned regarding the mayor's improper use of public funds and resources to campaign against the initiative. This includes, but is not limited to, posting campaign messages on the city website and creating a campaign video using the office of the mayor, using city resources. It's well-established in California law that a public agency may not expend public resources to promote a partisan position on a ballot measure campaign. Over 40 years ago, our California Supreme Court wrote, quote, "A fundamental precept of this nation's democratic process is that the government may not take sides in an election contest or bestow an unfair advantage on one of several competing factions." The court therefore went on to hold that a violation of the law carries both civil and criminal penalties. We've written a letter to the city attorney, not yet received a response, but these communications remain up on the city's website. We raise this again here today because it's imperative the government not put its thumb on the scale. The 9212 report, like all materials prepared by the city in connection with a ballot measure initiative, is legally required to be fair and impartial and accurate. Thank you. We look forward to a transparent, fair, and impartial 9212 report. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you. All right. Returning to the council, Rick, can I ask you to respond?
Yeah, just quickly, this is something that was raised last week. A letter was received concerning the use of the mayor's, you know, public funds by the mayor on this measure. Everything Mr. Welch says is true once something qualifies for the ballot. That's the distinction. That's the case law. There isn't a ballot measure at this point. It's merely a petition to seek to get on the ballot. The city charter puts in the mayor the power of, as the political leader of the city, to take leadership on, with the community and the city council on policy issues. And this is clearly a public policy issue. Once, if, assuming that the, the measure does qualify for the ballot, there will be prohibitions, as we're all well aware, of any use of public funds campaigning one way or the other. And I can assure just personally that the 9212 report and impartial analysis and anything that's done will be impartial. But at this point, it's, it's not a qualified measure. I think the case law that's cited, you know, we, we deal with this a lot. And I respect the fact that Mr. Merx, or not, Mr. Welch is with a, a very good law firm. But I, I think that we don't read the case law the same way. We, we, it, it's still early and it, it hasn't qualified for the ballot. I think that's, I don't think that, is there anything more in the 9212 report we have to add? Okay.
Okay. Councilmember Rocha?
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you very much, Councilmember Jimenez, for making the motion. But I do want to be cognizant of an issue and probably it's best to wait for the city manager and not to interrupt. But I have no interest in trying to burden city staff and move forward with some items in here that are outside the scope of what we think we should be doing professionally or that might compromise the study itself. So, for me, I'd personally prefer to defer this for a week and maybe staff would have a chance to take a look at my memorandum a little bit closer and let me know what they think might or might not fall within the scope of the study that you're going to do or might, might be included in the cost issue. Again, my interest isn't just to go forward blindly, but I guess I'm at a bit of a disadvantage if work, if staff's not in a position to share with me what they think some of these recommendations might do or ones that they might think would be able to be included. So, I'm, I'm not interested in going that path, but I don't have the ability to pick and choose. If you're not able to provide me any guidance on which ones you think might be too difficult to include or which ones you think might be included, then I can't. I hope you can appreciate it's hard to make a determination. So, I, I would prefer to defer it, but I'm also interested in what staff's thoughts on that are.
Clearly, we need to do a little bit more work on the scope, and we need to come up with a budget estimate or some budget alternatives. And I think we, we probably need a week or 10 days to do that. But we can come back to council or, or to rules.
I'm comfortable with that. I want to do good policy work here. And thank you, Councilmember Jimenez, for speaking about this particular project and the impact, impact on your particular community, which is why I think Councilmember Jimenez put it perfectly. The more information we have, I think the better we can serve our residents. So, I'd prefer to defer this for a week if that's enough time. If you need two weeks, I'm comfortable with that. For me, I'm more interested in the information than the timeliness of this. But I know, as the city attorney pointed out, you know, there is a time issue that we're not the masters of, we're working around others. So, again, I'm still looking for staff to let me know if you can do this work in a week or not. I don't want to make a motion or rescind the motion and suggest a week if that's not enough time for you.
I think it'd be good to have two weeks and exceed the expectations if we can.
Councilmember Jimenez, would you be comfortable with modifying your motion?
I would certainly be willing to modify the motion to defer to two weeks.
Defer for two weeks? Perhaps it would be helpful to get some clarity about the timeline. Mr. Welch or Mr. Schroeder, could you let us know, does it say a ballot measure for June or for November? Would you like to come down here and perhaps speak into the microphone?
Hello again. In terms of, in terms of timing, it was represented on the record. 180 days is the legally required amount of time from the issuance of title and summary. And, you know, the, as it was also mentioned, the legal deadline to place something on the June statewide primary and consolidate with that election is, I believe, March 9th. It could be the 10th, you know, day or two there. It is, our every intent to gather signatures as quickly as possible and to be out of the field. So, in terms of what you all, you know, your decision about how quickly you move with this report is in your hands. But as far as, you know, our effort, we are, we are gathering signatures and proceeding as quickly as we can.
Yeah, I believe either you or your, your, or Mr. Schroeder said something along the lines of trying to get signatures in within a couple of weeks?
It's possible. And we, you know, we can't speak specifics. It's dependent on, you know, how it goes in the field. And, you know, the June election, in terms of the petition, you know, I can let you know what, as I think the city should know, it does ask for that earliest possible election, which is common in these sorts of petitions to make that request.
Right.
City San Jose, being a charter city, does have an election in June, which.
So, I think you clearly told us that it's going to be June without telling us it's going to be June. So, we should prepare for a June election. In light of that, I think we just need to be mindful of that in terms of assessing the timeline. Councilmember Rocha?
Thank you, Mayor. So, if you spoke to the study we did around minimum wage, can you recall how long that took us to complete? As a comparison?
I was involved with that. They're, they're very substantial. I mean, we had a team. It probably took six to eight weeks of work. It started out involving the clerks and office and then came over to the manager's office. And I would say we probably worked on it over a six-to-eight-week period.
Was it done in-house?
Yes.
Was it done in-house? Okay. So, in this instance, we're looking at a consultant, potentially, I think you said?
Yes, I think because of the issue of the fiscal analysis of a land-use development project is a much more complicated undertaking and also the important issue of the transportation impacts, that, that it's a very specialized expertise that we need to access outside of our city.
Okay, so I'm looking at, if that two-week deferral is October 31st, we'd be looking at six to eight weeks, again, if this study has any similarity to the previous one. So, we could be done before the end of the first of the year, potentially.
Yeah, if we, if we needed to, and yeah, I think that's what we would have to, to work toward. We'd have to get the consultant contracts in place. And then, of course, there's all the holidays and vacations. But yeah, we'd be prepared to, to move quickly whenever we need to.
Got it. Thank you very much.
Councilmember Jimenez?
So, I just want to clarify. So, if we defer this in two weeks, are we just deferring Councilmember Rocha's memo? And can my memo with the mayor still go through? And then in two weeks, add whatever analysis that Councilmember Rocha wanted?
And I think we would come back with a budget for this. We would have to allocate resources to, to do this work. So, I'm not sure that answers my question.
Okay. If you could rephrase your question, I'm sorry.
So, is it deferment for the whole item, for my, for our memo? Is it for, for Rocha's memo?
Yeah, it sounds like it's a deferral for the whole item, but I might suggest, at the very least, we move forward with what's statutorily mandated so the work can get started. I think that would be helpful.
I would emphasize, I think that's very important. A lot of the stuff in here is stuff you would see in an environmental impact report. Not to the degree necessarily, but because this is an initiative, it's exempt from CEQA. There is no environmental review required. So, we're going to at least try to take a look at, you know, in, in some detail. And that's going to take some work.
Well, and, and that's why I, I want to make sure that this moves through. There's just so much to research that delaying even two weeks. I mean, I think there doesn't need to be a comparative analysis. need to be a comparative analysis to figure out whether this, what, in terms of what impact it has on the city, independent of a comparative analysis. This analysis should stand on its own. So I, I'd be interested in moving my memo as well.
All right. Would you?
So do I have to make a substitute?
Do you want to suggest, you can either, I think there are two options here. You can make a friendly amendment to accelerate that portion or you can make a substitute motion. And perhaps you may want to start the friendly approach first.
Counselmember Jimenez, I'm quite comfortable with that. I think you're absolutely right. Couldn't, I couldn't agree more. I don't know if Councilmember Jimenez is comfortable with that as well.
Yeah, that sounds fine. So moving forward with the original direction and then bringing back Councilmembers Rocha's concerns in a few weeks.
Okay.
Yeah, that sounds fine.
And so which of those areas is staff going to be able to analyze? Is that something that you're, you've agreed on as of now or will you first take a look at this a little bit more and give a feedback in terms of what's already been identified through our general plan process and then what needs to have a little bit more analysis?
Yes. For Councilmember Rocha's, if you, if, if you want to go forward with this comparative analysis, in addition to the regular 9212, you know, basic required categories, what would that involve?
Great.
What, what parts of it can we just answer in a very straightforward way because the work's been done already?
Oh, wonderful. And Mayor, I'd just like to respond to one of the speakers who came up and talked about our senior housing and our veterans in our community. And, you know, this memo that the mayor and I have put forward is, is really to analyze the impact that this initiative may potentially have, and it's not anti-affordable housing, it's not anti-housing. It really, my, I'll tell you, my district is made up of like 45% seniors, so 55 and over, and I'll tell you that probably half of this room in here is, if not more, 55 and over, and I don't consider them seniors per se. But some of them who have self-identified as seniors and have come to me, my community is, is very savvy. Many of them are seniors and veterans and they can, they, they oppose this initiative. This is, the other piece, aside from just doing the analysis, I wanted to give a little bit of my own take on this, on this initiative. This is not affordable housing for seniors and for veterans. These are very luxury homes that will start at $1 to $2 million, and I don't know about you guys, but, you know, veterans are typically not purchasing $2 million homes. And so I, I just want our colleagues to think about, the last time we talked about bridge housing and the tiny homes and the flare-up that some folks had in their own respective districts. That, you know, you, people were telling, basically people pushed back a little bit on affordable housing, and this is not a pushback on affordable housing. This is a pushback on making sure that no developer circumvents the city process and that they don't circumvent the general plan. So I just wanted to be clear about that piece. I wanted to make, I just wanted to also let my colleagues know how important it is for my community to have an analysis on traffic, environment. I mean, just, you know, the list goes on, you can see it on the memo. Evergreen only has a couple of roads for ingress and egress, and so we have traffic on the roads, and then that's not even reaching 101 or 280. So when we get to 101 and 280, we have another congestion, another traffic issue. So there's a lot of things that, that my community is already thinking about ahead of time when they read this initiative a little bit more than just the mailers that they get, talking about how great this, this project could be. And as much as I would love to support affordable housing, I have to support our general plan, and I've done that in the past in my vote in, with District 6. There was a very noble cause for teacher housing, but it was in, in, in the wrong zoning. And, and we have to make sure that everybody abides by the same rules. So if the zoning isn't right, it, it, developers should go through the same process as anybody else and not circumvent city process.
First of all, I want to say, Councilmember Jimenez, that was very well said, that, you know, our planning process and general plan should be, should not be circumvented by, by the ballot measure. And particularly around the comment about, you know, our community wants to have direct democracy. Any, anyone who's ever attended a town hall around a development project knows what direct democracy looks like. I just, I have a question, just a better understanding, Councilmember Rocha, of what we're trying to accomplish with your memo. My understanding is that the process would be that we would vote to, you know, approve this measure going forward with the requirements or the analysis that we have outlined in Councilmember Jimenez and the mayor's memo. So I'm just, help me understand what additional value doing a comparative analysis is going to bring to, to the process.
Thank you. You know, wading into this particular issue could get very deep and messy and different opinions. I'll just start with what Councilmember Jimenez just offered in terms of talking about the traffic impact to our community. For me, why would we not want to know what the traffic impact of full build-out of industrial versus what this potential project might have in terms of its traffic impact? What if it's significantly less? Or what if the build-out on the industrial is significantly high and it just is complete gridlock, which it already is significant gridlock? I was a chief of staff or council member in this district for almost four years, so I'm pretty familiar with the area. So for me, that's just the basic one is why wouldn't we want to know what that impact would look like and compare the two developments?
And how would that be used? I mean, okay, we know, we find out what the traffic impact's going to be. So, so, I mean, so how, so what's the significance of that in terms of this process as it go into the ballot?
Well, then you're, you're taking it a step further, which is if I'm in a position, let's just say hypothetically, I'm asked, what's your position on this? And if I was looking at this potential development versus the proposed potential development or the industrial development versus the residential, and again, I have no interest in pigeonholing myself this early, but it appears you want me to, of what I think of this particular proposal, you know, do I think that this site is viable for industrial? Absolutely not. There's a significant amount of industrial available in Edenvale, and it's not very far. And to suggest that there's going to be industrial development on this particular parcel buried against the foothills, that far away from transportation opportunities and transit opportunities, I think is a farce, personal opinion. That doesn't mean that I support the initiative. I've been very clear, whether it was a minimum wage or opportunity to work or whatever it may be, is I personally don't prefer initiative, policy work by initiative. It doesn't allow for, in my personal opinion, public input, elected official input, city staff input. I think it's very important to have that and initiatives take that away. So I'm not supportive of a particular model, but if I am asked to take a position on this, this is the kind of information that I want to know before I just made some knee-jerk reaction a week after I saw the signature submitted. That's how I prefer to do policy work, is to really get a sense of what I think the value is versus what the compromise might be. And that's bringing me to the last point, which is the compromise. We had this similar situation around the business tax modernization, if you're familiar with that, where there was a potential gross receipts tax that had been submitted for initiative, for signatures. And instead, we decided to go to the business tax modernization. Costs, I think, a great improvement that we didn't have to go to the ballot with that position that might have been very compromising for the business community, and instead we made a compromise for a good outcome, I believe. Is there an opportunity to do this? I don't know, but that day hasn't come, and without knowing what the potential impacts might be or what the potential opportunities might be, again, to just take a position day one saying, I don't support this because, which is not a bad thing, but I'm looking for a little bit more information before I take a position in support or oppose or potentially just to abstain. I hope that helps.
Well, it does help. It just, it, it also frames it for me in terms of how much additional work do we want staff to undertake for us to, to be able to feel comfortable taking a position on this, on this measure? And that's kind of...
I'm sorry. Yeah, that's a good point, and that's why I was hoping for a little bit more feedback from staff on what they might be able to do within the scope of the current study, what might be outside the scope. I appreciate that the Edenvale question is probably one that would be outside the scope and a lot of work potentially to do a comparison and the value there might not be enough. But for me, it was something that I thought would help me understand whether or not we want to suggest that we, this should be industrial development when there's a whole plethora of potential industrial development in Edenvale, which is more viable for, for office or commercial or industrial, whatever that may be. So I, I appreciate that. For me, the best comparison, the minimal amount of work that I would be looking for would be comparing the build-out of the industrial site as it's, as it's zoned and, and general planned for versus what this one might bring. So just those, that simple comparison for me would be the, the most minimum that I thought would be helpful. The other stuff was just, I don't want to say icing on the cake, I thought just valuable when making a policy decision of this importance, whether or not to adopt it outright if the council has that opportunity or to put it to the voters.
So, well, first of all, thank you for, for clarifying for that, that for me. So I, I want to quote Joe Angelo in, in terms of, is the juice worth the squeeze? And I just don't see that, you know, with what you're proposing, but I do, I do respect your, your thought process and, and what, what you're trying to, to convey.
Well, that just, decision opportunity, I don't, we really want to repeat that, will come in two weeks, but thank you for the analogy.
Can I ask, is Karen Mack here? May she answer from Department of Transportation? No? Okay. Well, yeah, I appreciate interest in what the traffic impacts of industrial development in Evergreen and the foothills are, but as I understand it, we would have already done that analysis with EIR in 2011. We would have done that analysis, the Evergreen specific plan as well, and the IR accompanying that plan, and to have these developers force the city to pay once again to do that analysis, I do not think is a great use of our resources. And, you know, I'm a bit offended when people come from a company in Pleasant and reportedly representing San Jose residents for Evergreen Senior Homes to tell us all about the veterans and seniors that are going to be housed in their development and referring to it as affordable. First, there's absolutely no assurance anywhere in this measure that a single veteran is ever going to get housed in a single unit in this entire project. This project, by its design guidelines, calls for the construction of a gated community. Its affordable housing requirements are actually watered down from the city's own affordability. So these guys basically decided there's one set of rules for them and a different set of rules for everybody else. Giving an example of what they consider affordable homes, seven of the 10 quote-unquote affordable homes under this measure would be accessible to a family of four making $128,000 or two-person family making $102,000. The rents would be almost $2,900 for families of four. That would be their, for predominantly, great majority of their quote-unquote affordable units. The rest of these, of course, are market rate luxury units in a quote-unquote, in, I won't say quote-unquote, it's, it doesn't say gated community in the measure, it talks about the construction of walls along with security guards and everybody else. We know what a gated community is. Of course, the affordable units may be outside the gates, presumably somewhere out there with the alligators in the moat. In addition, these developers have decided that they've got a different set of rules. They don't even have to pay traffic impact fees that every other developer in the city has to pay. And unlike every other developer in this city, they don't have to meet with the community and get community input about how to build a project that's actually integrated meaningfully in its surrounding neighborhood. So we have essentially a major push by a set of developers who have done this in another city who want to get, basically persuade voters who are not likely to pay as much attention if it's not in their own neighborhood, to approve a measure that has been misleadingly cast as an affordable project for seniors and veterans. And it's not. And I think it is important for us to have information that clearly describes what the impacts are going to be, but not to cause the city go through a lot of additional work and resources to benefit these developers when we've already done that analysis previously. So that is my concern. Councilmember Jimenez?
I think we're, we're talking a little bit about maybe the end of the Evergreen Hills development policy and, because it's at its end, the end of life, if you will. There's not very much space there. And there's a, a really long history in Evergreen in, in terms of figuring out what was viable or what worked out there, and I see this as, as a disrespect to the community and the process that they have gone through and the process that our city departments have gone through to get to this point. So I think if, if we wanted to open up, you know, the Evergreen development policy, I think that's a separate conversation and that might go on priority setting next year. I just don't see it as, as relevant here. I, I know that, that, so I live right next door to Evergreen College and I, and that acreage back there is not too far from my house, it's less than 15 minutes away if I'm walking. And Hitachi was back there and it was empty for a really long time, but this year, somebody purchased it for industrial use and kept it for its industrial use. So I think it's, that land out there is viable for that use. I think there was attempts for, for, for this particular land to be viable in, in industrial But I, I think we're, we're kind of going off track in terms of determining whether this industrial land is better suited as industrial or housing. And that's not, I don't think that's the decision that we should be making here and especially it shouldn't be, shouldn't be made through an initiative that the rest of the city is going to decide what is good for District 8. So I, I encourage my colleagues to think about how this initiative would then eventually affect your community because there is a senior overlay that then could be used in Coyote Hill, in Coyote Valley, could be used in Almeden. It is not exclusive to District 8, and that's the real danger here with this initiative. Now, obviously, I'm opposing this, but our memo here is simply to figure out the analysis and that consultant that Kim will work with will have a cleaner and not as passionate viewpoint as, as maybe myself. And so I think everybody else can then read it and, and determine whether it's something that you could support or not. So I'm asking you to give that opport, to give our memo an opportunity to bring that information to you. Now, anything additional, I think that this is not, this is not the time, I think, priority setting should, because it's a huge, it's a huge endeavor to, to open up that, the Evergreen Hills development policy, and I, I don't think this is the, the time or place for that.
Okay. The motion is on the floor. It has been amended to go forward with the statutory analysis, and we're going to come back and take a look at the additional analysis. Is that right? Okay. That's the motion. Let's vote. This is Councilmember Jimenez's or Rocha's?
My motion's second.
Yeah, Councilmember Jimenez's. I think there's a request to restate it. You want to restate it, Councilmember Jimenez?
It's to move forward with the statutory requirements of the 9212 report and to come back in a few weeks. Kim, I think?
October 31st.
To come back October 31st with the additional analysis or some thoughts on how, on Councilmember Rocha's request.
On the motion, let's vote. The motion moves forward. We are now, I think, going to return.